Meeting for. For the media, the whole meeting for September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. I would like to recognize that we are on the traditional land of the Jewish place of creation. And the homeland of the May he and that we are all treaty people. Thank you very much. Let's call for approval of the agenda. Council elsewhere, that can vary landmark all favor. There. Thank you. Uh, next we're going to community comments and papers. Any questions?
Ron, not a trip to the Ash Street. I have two questions tonight. The first one is, uh. I'm sure all of the public of Thompson is waiting for some numbers on a new aquatic center. Do we have any final numbers yet? Or anything close to a final number?
I think.
Yeah, some estimates of the estimates have been provided to council. Council has then directed us to set up meetings with the architects. So they can go through that and then I'll receive my direction.
But you can't release the number yet?
Not at this time.
Okay, secondly, uh. What is presently in the surplus slash reserve accounts?
I'd have to defer that to our CFO. I don't have that number.
At the next meeting? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good evening. My name is eighty four and I'd like to ask a question. If and when was the last external audit done of the city books? Third party audit on the city books?
Uh, third party auditor done every single year is municipal act. So army disability was done by Baker Hill.
Baker Tilly.
Baker Tilly. Um, and those results will then go up on the website once they're uploaded. So it's done every single year. It's a requirement to municipal act. It's also given to the province.
Oh, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Any more comments or questions? Last but final time, any more comments or questions? Thank you. Seeing that we will move on. Next, we're going to go into number five reports. And the first is our CMP report. So in charge by.
Thank you, man, mayor. Um. Staff Sergeant Shane Flanagan. Currently, the acting officer in charge at the Thompson detachment. Um, I have the monthly July report. I just got August today, so we can discuss that at the next. Maybe the whole meeting starts October. As far as the specifics, the areas where we're down in calls for service up to this point in the year. Um, are with the. Public disorder calls as well as um. The sexual assault investigations and traffic accidents. Where we're seeing an increased um number of calls for service is um. The obvious most serious ones, the homicides toward to date, the city of Thompson and the assaults. Okay, uh, with a lot of those being domestic in nature. Property crime seems to be very similar in past year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, up to this point in the year. And yeah, those are the significant ones, robberies as well are on par, I guess, as per previous two years. So you have any specific questions regarding that report?
Council, any questions? No, continue.
Um, I sent out a copy of our monthly newsletter. We've been providing there just regarding some community initiatives that. Uh, public community relations units involved, special constable Cleveland and constable divers. Um, possible divers just recovering from a long awaited surgery. Uh, that was delayed through COVID and everything else. So she's recovering. We're hoping to have her back um this fall. So, uh, however, um, special constable Cleveland has been picking up the slack. And then just outlined the good initiatives through the summer, um, with water park things, grad grades, um. And national indigenous week here, the proceeded nickel days, um, with various parades and then some uh. Activities at Waltham School with the barbecue, uh, as well, they're included in there, let's say, uh. The drug seizure, uh, that the general investigative section was responsible for last month. The few highlights of the summer, obviously, just kind of. Outline some of the stuff you're doing, um, doesn't include everything in those, uh, in that report, uh, we're tracking the mental health. Um, act stressors on our resources. So I included calls for service through July and August. They're very similar. And have been since we've been tracking these through May, uh, sixty-six and July, fifty-seven and August. I believe April was our busiest month. I think they're in the eighties. And then we're also tracking the amount of time we're spending at Thompson General Hospital with these clients. So we provided that, uh. To you folks, um. To leverage some of the initiatives you're working with the provincial and federal partners as far as, uh. Institutional safety officers and and some of those things. So that's why those statistics are being provided. Um, and there's a cumulative cost associated down the bar. So to date. What it's costing the city of Thompson for that kind of time that Thompson General Hospital. I've also been supplying a prisoner residency report. To um. The mayor, it outlines as far as where um. The folks that are coming through our cell area are residing. And that's just to give an outline of whether they're Thompson citizens or from online areas. So there's a breakdown per community in there. Um, as well as a total cumulative number. So I've been supplying that as well. And there again, just to um. To provide accurate statistics for some of the initiatives that, uh, you folks are working on as far as finding those kinds of things. I think we've been doing those since July and August. So September will be the third month. Kind of. Uh, as far as personnel, um. We have thirty-five conditions filled right now. Uh, what we're lacking is in supervision. So, uh, me being the only senior NCO. Um, on board, uh, we have an officer in charge, uh, just in the relocation process coming from British Columbia. And so we're hopeful that, uh, we can get his home sold out there and relocate here to Thompson sooner than later. As well as we're short to start disposition, uh, one of the general investigative section as well, one of the folks. That's where vacancies lie right now. Um, as far as support staff, we're still six municipal employees short. So we're we're in rough shape as far as the support services goes. I mean, administrative personnel, um, that being said, um. We had a very positive interview last week, so we're looking at hopefully filling one of those vacancies. So assuming we can get that through the uh. Background and criminal record justice of that. Those one of the agencies. So it's a start.
Thank you. Quick question ahead. It was important for us to many pursuing the terrible, both, uh, medical. Stop the institutional safety officers, my associate. See that like in July, we have forty-five point seven five hours. Is that? Is that only six point seven five for members at the hospital?
That's time spent waiting at the Thompson General Hospital, patients.
Fifty-seven calls. We didn't have more time at the hospital than that.
Not in August.
Well, that's good, good to hear, because I knew speaking members in the past, and some of the state. Overtime multiple times in a month to. Patients.
Right. And we're not only tracking that as Thompson judgment as concerned, but through the district as well, um, Thompson being up. A lot of those mental health patients come here. So oftentimes they'll see police officers there, um, with patients, but they're not Thompson's officers. Uh, per se, they could become online communities. So, um, districts tracking those numbers as well, which obviously would be expanded from ours.
Right, that'd be good. So we know the hospital.
Right. And that's to work with, uh, um, the Northern Health Region as far as, uh. Getting those ISO positions in place as well as, uh, the numbers and stuff to support them. Thank you.
And it should be noted too that when the officers are at the hospital, if we are short, then they have to call in on overtime to the case of ones that are sitting at the hospital. Um, Council elsewhere.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, for coming in. Deputy Mayor Lomack alluded to the mental health. I find alarming, and I'm still at one hundred and twenty-three hours. I understand why you have to be there in 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 the absence of the institution safety officers. But that's three weeks plus that we take our options off the street. And then I go to, I don't just to flag the couple, I I read the report. Uh, yesterday, but your salt is up sixty-nine since last year. Your domestic insults is up seventeen since last year. And one one begs to, you know, answer the or ask the question, if we add three weeks more of officers on the streets, would we still have these? Numbers going up. And I know that would be an answer to the question. That's me looking at the report as it is. But it's alarming that our salts are still going up. And certainly, when you look at what's happening on our streets, I I don't think I know anyone noticed that. As you get up in the morning and you go, and I know when I leave to take my wife to work most mornings, I see a lot of people on the boat, a lot of people on the boat. And that's at seven. So I can just imagine how busy the attachment is throughout the day and the evening. So I do thank you for what they are doing. And and certainly, there's a lot more to do. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff Sergeant had alluded to, uh. Uh, tracking statistics on residences for individuals that they're, um. I guess. Having engagements with, is that not privy to the rest of the council? Pretty much something.
And I guess we'll speak to RCP and say if they're really going to be that, we'd set up a meeting to review that.
So we, the only, um. The only value in collecting a statistic like that is if it's made available to, uh. The people that would use the statistic, but I also argue that it should be well. Um, I have no question of the fact that I certainly like that information. As individual, uh, on council and would imagine that fellows on council would also like that. Thank you.
Okay, so when we do get some of these information, uh, that we get at a meeting, we're actually asked not to share it. Until, you know, it's made public by them that, uh, RCMP share it first. Uh, rather than us. So that is when, you know, we definitely bring it forward. Thank you. And you can further, Jeff?
Though I'm just, uh, I really, the timing doesn't matter. I just think the council should have been.
Madam Mayor, I I just, let's, my disappointment that in when we are of numbers. Ourself as mayor elected long by the council. And I believe the council should be involved, all of us, we're all elected officials. So if you're going to meet with the police and they're going to. Devote that information, then I don't think we should be coming into the chamber and having to ask. That the meeting should be set up. And if that means that there has to be income or whatever because of the confidential nature, I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with is coming to know there's numbers over that we as elected officials know it's nothing to buy. But that's the concern for me. I would like to say in the future, I would rather that it would provide it, rather to be asked for.
Thank you. That is the purpose of having the members here to do the reports when they do come in, is to update or complete. Thank you. Council Valentine.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smoke. Thanks very much for the report. I definitely appreciate how. The RCMP have been meeting with mayor and council monthly at our committee, the whole meetings. I think that that really gives. Us as mayor and council and the public to see not only the issues that we have in front of us, but it also you take a good. Amount of time in your report to. Uh, let us see the good things that you're doing as an RCMP and what your staff are doing in the community and with our in our youth. So thanks for that. And I hope that these monthly meetings continue. I have a question. I've been big on advocating about these mental health stats and. What I would like to see if it's. If you're able to add to the report for these mental health stats is. And whether it comes to me or to the mayor is the member hours at the Thompson Hospital. Are you able to break it down to whether those hours are for? City of Thompson residents or from people with different addresses from that aren't residents of the city of Thompson? And because we're we're trying to advocate to help with our funding issues with residencies. And what our taxpayers have to pay for. The other thing is on the mental health stats is you have the cumulative costs of twenty twenty-two to eighty-eight hundred. Can we start to see a running tab or, um. Like a chart so we can see January, February, March, April, May, June, July? And I don't mean to, if it's too much work, I mean, by all means, don't do that. But just to break it down a little bit so we can see when it's up and down. Um, just the more information we have when we lobby about this effort, I think the more data is is a benefit for us. If for us, when we're in some of these, uh, meetings to advocate for the RCMP funding. The other thing, um, when you talk about the the positions and how. The RCMP as a whole, and I think everyone is short-staffed, I'm wondering if locally, if. The RCMP will have a presence at that job fair that I know northern Manitoba, northern workforce sector is putting on with UCN and Artie Parker. I'm hoping that there'd be a presence there for recruitment, but also for just for being out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to respond to that, Council Valentine, yeah, we'll have our recruiting officer up here for that, uh. Uh, career fair at Artie Parker. I received correspondence today, that's confirmed. So we will have a presence there, obviously, not just from our divisional recruiting, but, uh. Through, uh, special constable Cleveland and 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 hopefully Sandy will be back with them too, because she typically will attend those as well, just to supplement. Um, I could certainly break those down. I I think we added the S, the cumulative, just for simplicity sake, we can certainly do monthly. Um, we've been tracking those since May, so we can go that far back. Um. And it's already on an Excel spreadsheet, so it's not, it's not any extra work by any means, um, from our finance people. And we can certainly add that, um, filter to the MHA stats as well regarding residency. It's. Not any extra work that if that's going to provide value to, um, to you folks, uh. That are fighting those political battles, then we'll certainly get that for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you very much. For the report.
Welcome.
We head forward to the. To the next one and the newsletters. I really like the newsletters, getting some positive things. Uh, that are happening in the ranks and that, people at Thompson get to see them and all that.
You bet. I'll have those out before the October second meeting, I believe, so. I'm just to be able to.
I know it's a little bit of, uh, there is a protocol in the process before numbers and that can help you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're accumulating, obviously, for for the political battles that you folks face, uh, to to arm you with the most accurate stats we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to five point two, the August check registry. Ready? In comment to the search.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, check number zero zero three four eight seven five. Uh, for the six thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. I'd like to have a breakdown of the voice, uh, present to us. Thanks. They go on. And, uh. Another one is the, uh. Zero zero three four eighty-four. Five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Actually, you said that's what I go back, right? I thought the price is like almost three quarter million dollars. How long? The insurance money?
Sorry, what was your question? I go back to twenty-one hundred and seventy-two.
But the check is only five hundred and sixty-eight, right? Because of the difference. From the insurance money.
I love the the check to the corporate, the the insurance money, but in the return, they have themselves a paper.
Thank you. And the last one is zero zero three four nine one nine. Thirty-seven thousand, lost one hundred and seventy-two cents. And I also like that breakdown as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? And you will have that for the pair for you. On next, we want to go to. Five point three, August financial.
Sure. So recommendation of the August to go to monthly finance. So that's why you're seeing the August on this, generally, normally it's quarterly. Uh, so really, we've expected sixty-three point seven percent of revenues in terms of, you realize, uh, revenues are in track. There are a couple. Uh, we have two large, uh, customers at the landfill that have to need that, I can't remember. Of what we're getting projected. So there's no, yes, for us, no, that won't count. It's here. It was too very large, uh, revenues that we received there. The capital is included in this, uh, revenue. So that's why there's so much. Yeah, the fund has happened to be received, uh, through pockets that we have in the envelope here. Um, for next thing, I'm leaving or I'm starting to remove the half from this report and excuse it and make it. Expenses are all under budget. I would just question of, well, there is just that, that is very service. So. Most of that work is done in summertime. So. Year on year, we find showing in the end of August, there's a bit of a home bridge. Really, the main reason that are concerned about is that short-staffed, uh, resources. We have. Multiple days within that end of the month, and that we're currently trying to recruit for. So we will definitely see circles of day in the air, just. All the locations that we're currently doing right now. And have an experience with this one year. Um, and the utility, utility is lately over budgeted for the year, uh. By point three percent to really execute the college that we need in the year. Uh, that's has to now, so we expect that ever to be on.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. A counterpoint.
Yeah, I have a. Doctor crew in here. I need to check it. Would you allow me a minute, please?
Pardon?
Would you excuse me for a minute?
Okay.
Sorry. Um, for you to. They get, they bring, do us to renew the capital from the.
Yeah, see, I'll pick it up. We have a reporting capital, this kind of making it a bit more transparent of the capital.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, I was remiss earlier to say that Council Valentine is on Zoom and Council McWorld, uh. Sent his regrets to me. Thank you. We're going to move on to five point four, recreation and public safety report.
So, uh, under the public safety department. We held a meeting with the taxi industry, um, in relation to turning on the audio in the area around their vehicles. They currently do have. Um, the accessibility to be able to do that. It's just a matter of turning on the switch. Um, we did have a meeting for. Um, other twelve attendants, who did attend, were favored. However, most of them, uh, were, they were concerned about, um, people being able to listen to their conversations. Um, not also with people in the taxi cab, but on their personal conversations. Um, we did have hospital, um, people and advocates. And the sheet to that as well, talking about the safety, um, with safety, the safety aspect of having been in there. Um, so they rotated away taxi industry, we're going to pay all the pads audio in their vehicles. So the industry are going to get that from some of the taxi drivers that are in the city and speak with them and see what their input is. So we're going to hopefully land next week. You know, another meeting with them and see if, um, they are submitted for the board of the map. Uh, the bylaw sector, that position, um, is currently vacant and folks are just currently still agents, um, the animal control position. Um, bylaws sector actually moved into the animal control position. Um, so that position now is animal control slash bylaws matter. Don't have a report for, um, that position from the, uh, the sector is actually false. The community safety officer program, um, we currently hired. Yes, one is currently in Brandon, um, originally approved training. So on the twenty-sixth of September, we will have a full complement of four. The other CSO did not require work to do the training in Brandon because they were actually, uh, like, so. Um, so we had all the launch brand and they don't need to be trained, um, there and they're not on our research at this point. Once we all start, we will, we will schedule and, and as said, we kind of, right now, we have a coverage of seven hours. So we may have. We do have, we have to fix that, that coverage of the community. Looking at their stats again from May, June, and July, you can obviously see that there is a. Any of these are numbers in the community, the numbers are keeping when they rising. Um, and speaking when our meetings, my meetings with the CSOs, you took a lot of people, they are going to see though this month. Um, so the number are going down because some of the, and those are actually going back to maybe, so the numbers are set up to maybe, um, down a little bit. Um, much recreation, um, ice has been, has been installed in the TV your name next week. Um, the CIA is currently in it. It's, it's well, oh, we're quite busy over there, the facilities, uh, the ice, as well as the, uh. The gymnasium and the, uh, holding for the spring are. Are folks quite credit it. We only have a coffee. There's two vacancies in the NPR group in October. So. We are quite busy over there. Um, and suddenly that's going to take place. The ultimate basketball camp, um, had one in November. One last month, we had one in November, this September, uh, quite a few practices, it's a game in place that, um, you should have yourself coming up. Um, the game room, we were able to open the game room. Now, we had over two hundred people attending, um, a lot of reading back. Um, they wanted to continue. They wanted it year round, but unfortunately we didn't, uh, because we had the, uh, G V arena, um, to put the ice in. Uh, so we are going to be looking at maybe some pop-up days, uh. Maybe even in the gym when the gym is not being used, um, just have to be strictly people that people again, and it's a lot of, a lot of equipment. And it does take a quite a bit of time to set that up. I do have some other plans, uh, hopefully maybe in some of the other rooms that we can use that we need to keep up a lot longer. But overall, I think we had eighty-four hours and had the two minutes, so much shorter than. Um, and we also have, uh, the twenty-ninth of September, we're holding a family night in recognition of true community nation. Um, we are going to be taking all the games that we did have achieved in the place into the CIA arena, personally into the gymnasium. And we're going to be, um, having the setup for the family set for the team formation, um, on our recognition, live information. Patients, so they might just need to take place of the capital at that age. And this is in, um. Join that group, the team, team, yeah. Other things that have gone on, we, um, purchased some decals, life-size sport decals to take out the arena. We we have the own new banners on the light tools that are inside the TRCP. Um, the cool fundraising campaign, I do believe, and we report for them today. So we are family trapping on doing some things now, uh. With the full committee, so. The school district commissioner, he's committed, um, to where you can make a game, play, 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 play through school year. Uh, their player, uh, raise them, but it's actually got, they're going to be, they have that finalized for the end of September. There's three of them, please, for employers, um, that are, that are currently working with, often they're playing against. And they're looking at most, uh, the worst places. The media is only going to keep up event for the fundraising campaign at TRC station. And we're starting to, we're going to launch the fundraising campaign, which on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, that's seven thirty, and again, on the twenty-fifth, at one thirty. K hop will include, uh, information on the fundraising campaign and updating on what's happening with the project, the committing debate. There's going to be, uh, an announcement of a corporate foundation is going to take place, uh, on the twenty-fourth.
To get back to our E C S. It's some pressure on their C P it stops some of the more violent crimes that happen after you. Still don't know. Then people home earlier rather than later. I know the R C M P continue to lobby us to get more C S so. Uh getting that those statistics together would help us in the future, I'm sure. Uh better support that program. I also see. We're sitting with three of the old reviews to discuss this kind of information, so. I'd like to see some brainstorming and how where. We can utilize the game room at a different location, um sounds like it's successful and. I know it also wrong said the it's not a big amount of money that that you get for having that here. But recreation and busing are for sitting uh. Need those things that creates recreation for people in our city, we lose money every time. But it's. Uh I think we gain it in. The experiences of our city or residence. So if we can find a place to wheel it, we have it, so. See if we can figure out till when we can do that and I think we're all I'm used to. So I think we're supposed to be able to discuss this. Um. Yeah, uh and as uh because of about two hundred percent maybe we can partner with. We talk or. And then our gym is usually the use gymnastics, water, water events, uh we involve the ball. I know it's I haven't seen myself that's I don't know if he can use a gym. We're going to do that. And the other thing is uh that recreation just make a city safer and uh. It's kids good health and things to do.
Okay, I'm not okay.
Well, just for clarification, it says that we have. Uh position available for by law inspector. But we fill the position for animal control and by law, so we now currently have point five of them by law officer or.
Well, when we animal control position, we didn't make it, uh we. Turn it into the.
Okay.
So that position will expand control, but also will be able to. So the whole position of file on sector, that's the one thing.
Okay. For thinking.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh just a couple of concerns that have been public to me that I'd like to bring forward to. Uh recreation, um the restoration of the tables and chairs. In the general area around the main desk, I don't know if that's happened yet or not, but uh. A few people have asked, it's been uh people looking for opportunity to get away from the ice sheets or. Um when hockey comes in and have a place to sit down. Uh I know that COVID had made that difficult, um but with. Everything easing up, I'm hoping that if that hasn't happened already that we have plans to do that. Um and then also just like land support to. The idea of continuing to do the administrative function when we're doing by law. Uh enforcement, that includes issuing tickets even where we don't. Expect to collect a fine and the statistics from there are more valuable than the fines are. In my opinion, and obviously in the opinion of Councilor as well, uh so I let my weight stuff as well, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Uh Madam Mayor, if there is an answer with respect to the tables, I would just my hair.
Table.
They're back, oh. Thank you.
Thank you, um I was just gonna maybe one idea for the the game rooms and that. I don't know how, you know, are they are to set up for that? I was thinking maybe over especially the course of the winter, maybe we work the school district and district late and use their gyms on weekends. We'll do a different area of town for some of the, you know, weekends that Saturday and Sunday have been set up and some of those are all weekends and that's. I think there's uh be a shame if we don't use uh those games to. Our ability for the for the company, uh thank you, is there anything further on your report? Well, thank you very much, John. Next, we're going to go to ambulance responses, an ambulance report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh just draw your attention to the basically the month end report. The month of August under the fire responses, we're total of uh forty-three calls for the month of August, year of eight was three hundred and fifty-nine, which is a. An increase of ten percent over the year. Six. Uh ambulance responses for the month of August with seven hundred twenty-three, year of eight was five thousand two seven. Which I have been reporting has been a decline slightly of two percent over the years, but it's five thousand and seventy-eight. Let's assure them coming into the fourth quarter of this year. Uh inspections, preventions, we had uh one inspection. Uh we usually plan on the next, you've already here at sixteen uh with two B inspections and total points of thirty-four thousand five thirty. Over last year, this time we're making inspections and five re-inspections. The fire inspections and special permits, uh the month of August, we have seven uh seven new uh fire inspections. With one renewal, year of eight at thirty-three, uh which is slightly down on the last year of thirty-eight and.
Any questions? Comments? Thank you, Chief Malloy, seeing. We want number six recreation, six point one is a memo from the Director of Recreation and Community Services. In regards to the waving of fees for science breast. Connor?
Science question to us, um it's a traveling exhibit that goes around and around here. Um letting creature plus wanting to stay at the city of Thompson would be interesting, posting them part of the month. Twenty-four to December twenty. Um they would be, they needed a space that's around thousands for a foot, so we offered them the um. Sure that the T R C C. Uh it is a an exhibit that's really targeted, the audience target would be Kenny or under your range of all. However, anybody in attendance would be a free event, there would be no charge, that would spend um. Two, I believe it's two of their staff would come on. And they would be the ones that would be interacting with the people. He was in the exhibit. In order to do so, they would be in the much of the duration, so while they're in there, they uh their shop would be set up, they would be able to take it out. So they would be in a performing setting. So we're going to write that they would assume it to come on any other organization. So the total renting um rent will be fourteen thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars before you pass that. So we're asking, can we be going to lay those things?
Thank you, um for that period of time, uh do we normally have a lot of rentals of the in previous years? I know COVID slightly don't have the statistics, but. Uh November, December, do they have any Christmas parties, your kid birthday parties existed?
Well, there's busy thing. Yeah, sure, I I don't have the exact stat of what will be placed in the month of December. Um I do have some numbers of the revenue that we would take through the whole year. Um for that to cover, so in two thousand and eighteen, uh the whole year, we've got a uh the revenue was just. Eighteen thousand nine ninety-nine, two thousand nineteen, it was just over twenty thousand. And then in twenty twenty was sixty-six hundred and then in twenty twenty-two, so far today is like sixty-three. It's been what sixty-nine?
Uh Congressman Valentin.
Uh thanks, Chris Book. Um I think this is great. I mean, our youth, uh we are needing to do stuff with them to have this kind of an exhibit come to Thompson is great. When it says it targets the youth grades K through twelve. Is there any way that with our joint user group agreement that we have with the S D M L in regards to the T R C C that. Some of that would go into play, so. The rental fee for us maybe isn't going to be the fourteen thousand, that some of it can be identified as. Joint user group far from the school district under under the them taking their classes, because I'm sure that they'll take their kids. Through there during the day, so I'm just wondering if we can work something out in that regards with the school district with that user group agreement. To offset the whole total of the fourteen thousand, I understand you probably need the okay to get this booked, so I'm supporting this. Um with a follow-up to come with the school district on the on some of the costs, thanks, I think it's great.
Thank you.
You, Madam Mayor. From what I read this memo, if I'm wrong, please correct me, so. You are requesting to wait. So who who is this climate, I'm making a quest traveling reservation.
They're an organization from Ontario, so it's a it's called Science Word, it's an organization from Ontario and a. My understanding, they received a grant to go around and travel around the country. Um and offer this to give them an.
The order separate these two things to me is a good event, I look at this for you. But I have concern about, I will start to ask for wait unless it's come from them to send us a letter, I think the proper protocol. As I look at it. So I I I suggest to get the a letter from them, that reads more more thorough than.
Yeah, so that's pretty much how they started this off, they said that we can send you this exhibit, it's a museum, science museum on a subway, I believe. And that's how it started, they said we can send this to you, but you would have to waive the fees. We wouldn't pay rent, but we would send two members of staff to live in Thompson for the month and provide it free to the community. So that's how it all started off, so what they're now saying is. If we're to hold this event, this is the theoretical amount that we would have charged. To host them, but I think what the director said is, in reality, we're getting about fifteen hundred dollars a month revenue over that. Facility, so wouldn't have been rented for that many birthday parties or anything, nowhere near the fourteen thousand dollars. So that's how the whole ask has happened, which is why we have to bring it to council for.
I appreciate the update, uh somehow I think the uh. I I mean, for us to read this, we need the document, actually, we have that document, the first part, it just explains. That way we save my time to ask the question, otherwise, I look at this, it's like. How can we treat this, you know what I mean, so I'm just trying to make it right, so, thank you, man.
Thank you. On your part.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um. I'm probably gonna regret my comments in a couple hours, but uh. This, this is an exhibit on climate change. This they 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 wrap it up as a science interactive museum. But what it is quite clear is a climate action based. Uh presentation for kids, obviously it. Um I've found in my time, uh and I've spent twenty-five plus years working in the science. Uh in STEM uh industries, uh that a lot of this is political and I. I am thinking just by looking at this, uh that this is the same, uh more of the same. Uh I am not a climate change denier, however, I am well aware of. Um the politics that are at play with respect to that subject as well as others that I've been burnt on as well, including food sustainability. Um and other things like that, um for that reason, and not knowing what we're doing, uh or what they're presenting, I will not support this, thank you.
Thank you. Hospital.
Um. I I do think we need something for K to twelves in town and especially through the winter months. Um and as is a theory theoretical number not actual. I don't think it'd be that big of a hit to the city, so.
Uh Congressman Valentino, with your hand up again.
Uh yep, it is, I just uh I just want to say that like this, if you. Do the research on Climate Quest, the exhibit and Science North, the museum. Like, this is a pretty cool thing that they've are asking to come to Thompson and they're going across Canada, I mean, you can go to the website and research it. Um for for what this is and and what it entails, so Science North is a pretty big deal in Ontario. Um so I think it's a great opportunity to showcase this to our youth. So I I'm I'm hoping that we can support this.
Thank you. Congressman Alfred.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, certainly if taken the time to read through it, I guess my comments is around where it's political or not. The thing that looks to me is thirteen point five hours a day, that's what we're would normally add. And we're going from K to twelve, but there's nothing more than this city needs, it needs something to occupy our young people. And this is another way to do it, and if they can learn something from it, wonderful. Uh I've always said ourselves, these are underutilized, and now we're trying to be utilized. So I certainly, based on that, and certainly Council found, we probably know more about the the science beast than I would. But I'm not looking at the political side, I'm looking at the fact that we've got an opportunity to bring them in from from and and have them. Um put off the exhibit to K through twelve, thirteen half hours a day, that means that uh possibly they're. Six and a half hours, the best way I'm reading it, I'm reading wrong, that's not the first time, glad.
Um it's I put thirteen and a half hours because they can't, that's how long the facility is open, they will be there for probably eight hours in the day. I mean thirteen and a half hours is for the financial part of it, because we should have to have it with anybody else, because they're they're they can't take their. I don't know about that room, and to allow us to.
Thank you for that clarification, but I still stay with what I was saying for for eight hours a day even. K to twelve, I think that's very, that's a lot of kids in our, you know, that must be a couple twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred children for sure, but all the elementary and the high school, so. I I would support it.
Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn.
That I agree, um. A lot of times I go in there and that's not being utilized, unless we have something. This is just uh something that may be there for a while, obviously the province or the fence have something to do with the. Grabbing some of the funds to these people that are coming up to show this. And just hoping that the some of our teachers, you know, will take their kids during the day to this. Um well, the science available. Close water and issues, it's a, you know what, uh. I've been to the Science North in in Ontario, it was a wonderful experience. And even if it's a little litter of that, then Paul's, I think that'd be a lovely thing for kids to see. And uh maybe we'll get some of us, uh some of our children more excited about science. So. I'm supportive, thanks.
Thank you, Congressman Cooper.
I agree with the idea, I I'm willing to support it, but my problem is. These people are receiving a government grant to do this. Now they're asking for more, here's my problem, thank you very much.
So the that we need support the waving of these or not.
I don't agree with it, they they uh I support the idea of it, but they uh they're getting the grant from the government to do this. Another ask, no, they. Which probably wouldn't be that much, I think they should be the solid, solid.
Uh thank you, I think it's a great opportunity for Thompson and the North, I think we could expand it, especially being over that course of the month to outline communities and commit. You know how we used to do with our swimming pool, running, uh you know, encourage other other communities to come in and and take advantage, so. Uh I'm definitely in support and by keeping track, I've got. Commissioner Valentino, Commissioner Prue, Commissioner Elsberg, Deputy Maryland Mark and myself in support, so that is the majority of who is here right, so. I do think that will go forward to next step.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I still work there, the next step would be to council, right?
Yes, okay. On to the.
Can I just clarify that with the director, are you looking for a resolution or you're just looking for a consensus? We'll sort that out, okay, very good.
I think with that recommendation that I was always forward like that, and we should make sure that we're appreciable to make sure that. And brought here to certain people, once we go, they're both aware. Because I won't let send his teachers, I couldn't tell you right now, I'm sure that I would be jacked up, they'll take kids and something.
That's. Thank you. Next proponent to legislator. Memo from the Executive Assistant in regard to the border revision. Just when they take.
Um as for the organizational procedure of by law, appointments, the board revision takes place at an organizational or inaugural meeting of the council. On November third, twenty twenty-one, council passed resolution number twenty twenty-one one fifty-one. Appointed Deputy Maryland Mark, Councilor Elsberg and Monk for the board. This year, the board is supposed to place before the inaugural meeting of council, it's scheduled for October sixth. So council has determined if those donors appointed in last um November, still want to have their name. Before or if they, they don't have time or other commitments, if we need to bring forth another resolution, I just. Need to know of the people that were just uh appointed back in last year, or at least go and let their name stand.
I guess we'll go to the person's whether, Congressman.
I'm okay.
And for number?
I'm okay.
Um Madam Mayor, I'll regret to roughly tell you I'm not to not to mind it, association meeting on the sixth. I'll be I watch it.
It's happening, okay, so then our resolution will happen that part.
Okay. Hopefully use the.
Don't ask if anyone's interested to forward your name over to Tammy, um if there's only one, then we bring that for, if there's multiple people, then we'll have a small election. To choose who you the third person.
Are you sure Matt is interested on going on? Okay, Congressman Cooper, we see anybody else? Seeing none, Congressman Cooper, if you'd like to sit on board of revision for the October sixth.
True.
Tammy, is that good for you?
Yeah, I'll just bring forward the resolution.
Thank you, thank you. Seven point two is a letter from A M M in regards to City of Thompson, full sponsored resolution. Uh zero one twenty twenty, which all the A M M and not need the province resume certain appeals processes. And the uniform setting of timelines for land and use planning proposed bill for you.
So this is one of the resolutions that was passed by council back in twenty twenty-one, it had to do with the changes that were proposed by the province for the planning act. Um this resolution or this letter is just basically letting the council know that um. A M M has had some movement with the province and a number of changes have been made, and this will no longer be an A M M lobbying effort. And the same goes for item seven point three, um there were two slightly different uh resolutions that were passed by council. Um and were adopted by A M M, but A M M is now letting us know, due to the successes or partial successes, they'll no longer be lobbying. It's really just for information.
Thank you. Thank you, the same then, we'll move on. Uh seven point four is a letter from the Administrator in Thompson Public Library in regards. To arts, culture and sport in community fund, small capital grants and special initiatives program.
So the uh City of Thompson is aware of this grant, it's our Arts, Culture and Sport Community Fund. Um what makes it unusual is it actually funds libraries, it will fund not just operating, but it will fund capital, which is quite rare, so. Uh my last four years, I've never really seen this kind of funding available, uh we've sent it off to the library and they're interested in making an application. Um they've been working with city staff on what they'd like to do for their building, and they've sent a letter to council asking that council support their application. Um right now, they're talking of for every dollar that's put into the grant application, this grant will match a dollar. And it goes up to three hundred thousand dollars is the max that can be applied for. So previously, the library and the budget process said they would put thirty thousand to their H V A, that'll now be, if it's acceptable, sixty thousand dollars to upgrade their heating controls and whatnot. Um they have a number of other renovations that they're discussing doing, they're working very hard to get quotes, because of the timeline of this grant. Council would have to pass the resolution saying you're in support of their application at the Monday reading meeting of council. We've already sought permission from the province to submit the resolution the next day, because the deadline's actually the twenty-sixth. So that's the request that if councils or the committee supports, we've bring a resolution for the support of their application on Monday.
Thank you, uh Costa Valen Gano.
Thank you, Mayor Smuck. Finally, a grant for libraries, like how good is this, like absolutely, I all like definitely support this to move forward with the resolution. But I also think that, and I know it's time consuming, but the the library with their new employee. That we need to offer them some support through this grant process, because if you're not aware of grants in the process and the writing of them. It's, I wouldn't want them to miss anything, so I would hope that we can offer some support to them to get this in and that, you know, all the. Eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed, because library grants are rare these days.
Thank you, Anthony.
Yeah, so myself, I've been assisting them, I've met with the library board in the evening as well to explain the grant, to get their support. Our Director of Development is also supporting them on their grant, um our facilities manager and our carpenter preparing some of the quotes. And there's a few of the local contractors that are assisting um getting the pricing as well.
Thank you.
And we're also working on other entities that may be able to share in the grant funds, so it's uh all good news. Congressman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh certainly I believe it is good news, uh we've been hearing from our uh. Administration over the years of the issues with H V A system over there, and dependent library myself, I've seen some of that. Uh the only question I had, when you talk about support and basically putting their grant together, getting uh support from from folks and stuff like that, it's not actually a dollar value. The soft dollars and our dollars, soft dollars, and we use our administration, they all, we're not actually dealing with our dollars by providing extra funds, correct?
Yes, you're correct, Counselor, um. We are basically providing support to do the application, they would be coming with their funds, and we've also connected them to other grant makers in the community. Because there are a lot of stack in this grant, which is also unusual, so if they can raise additional dollars by Monday, they can multiply those dollars as well. And the reason it needs a resolution is because the City of Thompson owns the building, so basically needs council's permission to do the work.
Thank you. Deputy Mary.
So this resolution would also go with new budget funding for that. You know, so don't we already have? Funding for the library for this year?
Um we may be able to include, I believe there was a fire panel, but in terms of the H V A, that was a contribution from the library themselves, I don't believe council money to that. Okay, but they, they would include, we'll have all that ready for Monday, so if there's anything else is approved, we will include that, this done. They were working on their post today, and I believe we're gonna meet with them in the next couple days, to see what that actually looks like. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah. Officer Law.
This clarification, so they're not asking for help of my financially, they already have the money now.
They're not asking for any additional financial assistance from the province, they're asking for the city to support their application. And we're providing staff support because they've never written this sort of a grant.
Definitely.
Thank you. There's no more pressure before we move on.
Just to confirm, we'll have a resolution on Monday night.
All everybody's favorite. Yeah. Point five is a letter from Thompson Seniors Community and Resorts Hospital in regards to. Uh eliminating bus fares for senior residents.
Yeah, so this is just received on September thirteenth, from the senior resource council, I'll just read it out for council. We thank the City of Thompson for, just back to this, the council previously provided free ridership for seniors up until about March. Um and that is now stopped. Um thank the City of Thompson for generosity and eliminated bus service or fares for seniors the past year. Um we understand a senior ridership on the bus average to be hundred per month. Uh given this little ridership and evidence of need, we request city extend bus ride for seniors as a free service to the end of this and next fiscal year. About December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and then there's just more comments that they've made and their requests. And then there's just more comments that they've made and their request to never fly. Was sent by the chairperson of the Thompson senior community. As this is not budgeted for, the administration brought this forward for council to discuss and debate.
Councillor Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It certainly gives me pleasure to discuss this topic. I believe whole largely, not because I'm a senior now, but I believe whole largely the seniors have built this city. And if we could include that provincial and federal government will waive their impacts as well, I would support that. But this is the least we can do to help them to get around in our community. I think it's a very small part that we can play. And so I fully support, not only, I believe it says going forward. That there would not be any fears charged for our seniors in Thompson. Thank you.
Councillor Wong.
Then you may admit. I definitely have no problem to support that because I was always suggest to wait that. So I don't think it's a big amount, right? Am I, do we have any number though?
I don't have to go to our finance office, see a vote, see what the impact was over the last few months.
Yeah, but doesn't matter to me, this, I don't think there's a lot of senior that taking the punch. So. I have no problem to support that part, so to see whatever the the rest of the next. Opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Smuck. I'll be supporting this to move forward. I was surprised by the number of three hundred per month. Obviously, they're using this and it's not being, I mean, it's being used. So I think it's a great thing for the seniors of this community. And but there is an end date, if I understand this, to be December thirty first, twenty twenty three, and then it's relooked at again. Is that my understanding?
Yes, I believe I'd have to check with my team, but I think process wise, it'd really be to the end of this year. And then the next council would decide. How that goes for next year's budgeting processes.
Okay, thank you. I'm fair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of this. Anything you can do to help our seniors impose a law release.
Thank you.
Definitely not dead set against this. However, I would much prefer a reduced rate. Seniors normally enjoy a reduced rate. I would suggest to be reduced more. Just thinking long term fiscally and what we're setting ourselves up for. My preference would be for a reduced rate, just to wave with these all together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor, next year I support this. Can we look at it, maybe with the industry, but I like to look at that every time. When you're talking with three hundred riders per month. What is that? Four hundred and fifty bucks maybe? And it allows our seniors to get down to get prescriptions, get their food, whatever they need for our own businesses. Keeps them on the war weather. Yes, well, sure, that would help. One of our seniors. Thank you.
Anybody else? I was went to TRCC today, Tuesdays, the seniors are there in the afternoon. Before we started this bus for a year or two ago, before COVID even. There was very few people got together when they even had their seniors groups. Today, there was over twenty playing yacht sea and crib and this. Made a point of asking, because I knew this was coming on. There was actually only about four of them that you. What it has done, it's brought people together and they're getting rides with each other even in their vehicles. But it supports them now if they do need to get somewhere on their own. Going up town, the prescription seemed to be like the biggest one that was appreciated for these bus rides. Not not too many went to grocery, but it's definitely just this little gesture. And on his behalf, the seniors in general together that they're making better arrangements or stuff for themselves. So it's definitely appreciated. I definitely am one for supporting it and from what I see, it should move forward. I don't know, Anthony, do we have to decide now whether it's just to the end of twenty two or we can make it over twenty three?
I believe the discussion for twenty three should probably be left to the next council. This council wants to decide this year. We'll have to take it away because this is kind of a last minute addition to the agenda. Have a discussion of what the implication of this is and how would we do that if it requires. Some sort of a meeting or resolution or public hearing, I don't know. We'll have to look into that for you.
I think I think we could all agree, maybe by show hands, it to the end of twenty twenty two. We just have to make sure that, you know, the next council knows about it so that it doesn't get bottlenecked and continued on. So is everybody here by show hands an agreement that this goes from twenty ended twenty twenty two? Yes. Thank you very much. Seven point six is a letter from Hindu. Per Donna, Samash of Thompson in regards to the waving of fees and time extension for the upcoming Diwali Diwali celebration.
And I'm gonna have to go to Sonia for assistance on this, but my understanding, this is also a last minute addition. There's a request for waiving of fees, I believe. And if the request came too late based on the policy, so the director is not able to make that. Waiving on her own, so it was brought to council for discussion. On, I believe this is a cultural event that happens regularly at the city and was paused through COVID. And there's some request for consideration here on hours of operation and costs.
Tony, you know, I mean. You know, I mean, yeah, again, you said we just received this. I do not know and didn't access for the extension of the hour, which we can give. And actually have it before twelve thirty or twelve o'clock, and we'd have to reschedule for twelve thirty. We just have to bring in additional. So we attend. So we can definitely assist with that. The fee set for requesting to have made. Right now, the gym hourly rental is thirty five sixty eight, so the three D's are four one hours, which is eleven minutes, nine dollars. They do have another program made in King's letter. The difference would be four hundred and five hours and ten cents. So not the three hundred. Respect to the bottom portion, talking about having a. That actually comes from the province, that's not pushing anymore.
Thank you. I know I have attended. He's the one of twenty nineteen, I believe, was in the PRCC. Prior to that, I had attended some of the celebrations. Were over in the River Lodge place and we're very well. I think it's definitely a chance for the community to get together. The rest of the community is encouraged to come and participate in the celebration. So I for one would definitely support that we continue, we can continue this band. For the support we can. Councillor Wong.
So is that mean if they don't have the handling, they're not going to have, I don't know, it's still going on anyway?
Yeah, we're gonna have to discuss that with them as director mentioned, that is regulated by the province. So we've already put them in touch with the province. It's not something that we control. So that's public health inspector.
Okay, their regulations. But it's in the letter, but I don't think this is what they're asking tonight anyway, they're asking for maybe. So I personally have no problem because. This is the people that live in Thompson and pay tax to the facility. But definitely have no problem. Prior to this, we tried to waive sixteen thousand dollars and we said no to this, I think something is wrong with this. Anyway, I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And that certainly event the opportunity to attend their event over the since of the council as well, you're well received. It is certainly truly communal. I'm from Newfoundland. We always do the same thing, feed the whole world and it's certainly welcome. They are not much different. You do win it, doesn't matter who you are. You're well respected, you're fed, what? Son, Sonny has already answered the question on extending the hour, which don't seem to be a problem here. I am with Councillor Wong. I mean, this is certainly a community event. They've already paid whatever they've paid us credit. They haven't had it for two or three years. We need to get the community back. So that we're doing more and more of these things, so I would be in favor of waiving that fee as well. At least for this year. Food handling part, I was approached, I'll be telling you about that right now. And I understand that this to be basically in a kitchen where that's prepared by food handler, commercial. The city manager say that they're going to look at it and see what happens there. It would be an awful thing. I know it's, you know, probably all expecters, probably all expect. It would be an awful thing if they couldn't go in. I think we should try to do everything we can as a city to make this work. Certainly, I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Previous, yeah, I'll be supportive of this. Don't let all the different purpose for our communities get together and we can get back to it later. Actually, we'll to the public health inspector, I will was in town here. When the office, I'll produce, I think it's passed that in my management. I don't think it's that much of a order of process to get that. So. I hope they get that. Get it done, at least they know.
Yeah, basically what it amounts to. But often I old doing the community Christmas dinner. And people in their group that have a food manager certificate that are responsible to make sure that the food is being heated right and calibrated. And the facilities. Councillor Wong.
I just want to know if our. Our rental agreements for the evening as a. Dependency on whether or not the provincial permit is obtained. Are you able to do the rental without? Is the rental dependent on them getting the other permits they need or is it independent?
You have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the person renting, it's their responsibility to secure their permits, right? We've never really gotten involved in that.
Thank you.
Councillor Galantino.
Thanks, Mayor Smuck. Yeah, I think this is a great event. I had an opportunity to be invited to the Diwali celebration at Riverview before at the River Lodge. A couple of things, I'm just wondering, is that the correct dates? First of October, second of October and the twenty third, or is that a typo and supposed to be the third? I'm just, I just want wondering if we should double check that. I don't know. And in terms of the potluck part of it. So if I have a birthday party for my child and bring pizzas into a room that I'm renting. I don't need to have this food handling certificate, correct?
That's correct, because it was prepared in a commercial kitchen.
Okay.
We'll just let the director respond.
So if you have a birthday party, you know that are in attendance, so you know if something happened, somebody got sick, you know, you have to contact. Because you know who your attendees and you're inviting them. If you're having an event and you're, you have multiple people there and you don't want them showing up, you don't want them hearing the food too. You're there for granny or who you can, if something happens to food, if it's school, somebody got sick. You don't know who to contact to let, you don't think you know what, this is a little bit contaminated. So that's the difference between being able to give it to the public versus having it contained where they like or.
Okay, can I follow up, Mayor Smuck? So I'm, I'm just wondering in the, in the language of this paragraph, is it? Are they organizing for their, their community celebrating Diwali? I don't, are they talking about a City of Thompson community potluck for all of our community? You know, where I'm trying to go with this is. Is it just for, it's like, are they just like having a birthday party where they don't need this? I guess is what I'm saying.
With the Diwali celebration, it's basically their community that organizes it. But there is outside invitees, like I've been invited to it for two or three years, Councillor Ellsworth. Other community persons are in attendance at it. Anthony.
But we will follow up with them just to clarify how that will do it.
Okay, I think it might be where the conversation to see how this is worded, if if it doesn't need to be. Because they had it before in the TRCC lobby and would have been the same group and they wouldn't have had gone that route. So, okay, thanks. I'm supporting it.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, they actually had it on the same night as ballet night. So it was quite busy in the lobby and there and you could go into the gym and with them, but it was actually. The intermission on the hockey games, actually, there was a lot of people they invited just in. So there's, again, I think you need to clarify, just see, but how it's worked in the past. Councillor Ellsworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just thinking that maybe. Because of the things that change, but maybe just in attendance, so you know, we want to have a tracking. It's their community and a gentleman fight as they have in the past, we'd have a book with attendance in case something was wrong. It might be another idea to see if we can manage with that. But I agree that, you know, certainly work with the public, I expect what we need to do there, but that might be another way of that.
Thank you. So our Councillor.
I'm willing to end up supporting this. But with going down, when I got my pool down, we first. When you're dealing with public, you've got certain people in attendance that, you know, like you said, I'm going to do it. But I got one concern. When are we going to stop leaving fees, putting more costs on our recreation regarding loses money in here? That's my concern. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing by show hands, who is in support of. Leaving the fees and moving this forward. Thank you. Moving forward for you to get your information about crowds or who handling that. The next question, Anthony's one. Councillor Wong. Councillor Wong, the deputy mayor, I'm favorite.